Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our September 16th, 2019. This is my 30th anniversary today. That just reminded me. Regular scheduled work session. Tonight, we have three items on our agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you're required to fill out a public comment card and turn it into the city clerk before the agenda item has been read. If you are speaking on behalf of an organization, you must fill out an affidavit that you have the authority of that organization. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. Public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of the item. Please review tonight's agenda, and if you wish to speak, bring your comment cards to the city clerk. Once the item is called, no other public comment cards will be accepted. Where's Stacy gonna be? So, yeah, as you see, an agenda item, if you'd like to speak on it, please fill out a card and bring it to Stacy. So Stacy, if you'll please sound the first work session item.
The first item is discussion of Trail Master Plan, Parag Agawal or Michelle McIntosh-Ross.
Okay, so, whoops. Greetings. I am Michelle McIntosh-Ross, not Parag. Parag couldn't be here tonight, but I will introduce this item. This is to talk about our trails. Is it too much?
Should I just move over there?
This is what?
Yeah.
That's not working.
Oh, is that why?
I don't know.
It's on or not.
Is it a little bit better, right?
It's better.
Okay, good. That was the problem, Stacy. Okay, so, yeah, we're gonna talk about our Trails Master Plan update. We've been working on that since July of this year. As you know, or if you recall, we were at a similar council work session on July 22nd to discuss the kickoff of that Trails Master Plan. We've been having meetings with a stakeholder group that we put together. We've had two so far, and we have some members of our stakeholder group in the audience. We followed that up with some meetings with the community. We had several meetings during August. We had a meeting about the Crab Apple area. We had a meeting about Deerfield, and also a meeting about all of the green spaces and Birmingham Park, and had the community come in and work off of maps and so on to give us ideas about the trails. We also have a survey that is available online. There was an email that went out to folks with a link for the survey, but if you go now to our website, just for the folks at home, you can click on any of the agenda items on our city calendar related to trails. So, for instance, tonight's meeting and also the note for Wednesday's meeting, there'll be a link for that trails survey that you can go ahead and click on that and take the survey that all the other folks have been coming in and working on. So, before I go on too much, we have our Kimley Horn here with us to give the presentation. It'll be about 20 minutes of presentation, and then after that, you council will be able to get down here and look at these maps and give comments and so on, and as I say, roll up your sleeves and do some planning. So, we have Christina here, who will give the presentation.
There you go.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, mayor and council. This is weird to be turned around in this direction. I don't know that I've ever actually presented in this room in this direction. Charlene and I are going to keep it hopefully somewhat short and sweet, but we wanted to give you a little bit of an intro before we get into asking you to roll up your sleeves and work on the maps because we want to make sure you have enough information ahead of time. Oh. I was like, that's me. That's not very helpful. Okay, excellent. There we go. Okay. So, just a quick reminder on process. We have three phases. We are completing our second phase. So, the first task focused on existing conditions, understanding what we have today. Second is really focused on understanding what are the needs, what are the full concepts of what we would like to be able to see, and then how do we follow from that point on to understand, well, there's a lot here, how do we actually take this and implement it over time? So, that's, we're wrapping up phase two and getting ready to go into phase three. As Michelle mentioned, we've had a bunch of different meetings so far. Our three target group meetings that we've already had, Crab Apple, Deerfield, and the interior trails meeting, those are already done. We're having our council briefing tonight, and then on Wednesday, we have our target group meeting for the citywide area. And then moving forward from here, we've got some project management meetings. We're gonna be meeting with the Milton Public Art Commission to talk about opportunities for integrating public art into the trails and trailheads. And then we also have our next Trail Advisory Committee meeting, our third one, and then we'll be coming back for two more meetings and presentations with council. So, just a reminder, what we heard from our Trails Advisory Committee was that there were four overarching priorities, and those four areas were Deerfield, Crab Apple, areas of safety concern overall, and then putting some green space, some trails within our green spaces. And so, that's really what you see here in front of you tonight are those essentially six focus areas. The survey that Michelle mentioned is open now. What we're asking for, we had a lot of people come out to the target group meetings, but we know that it's not always easy for people to come and join us in person, and so it's good to have an online opportunity, and Milton never disappoints when it comes to online engagement, so we really appreciate it. We opened the survey on Thursday, and since that time, we have had over 600 residents participate so far. So, that's fantastic, and we look forward to keeping that going over the next week and a half or so. So, September 25th is when the survey will close, so please help us get the word out as much as possible. We'll be looking for internal details for some of the different areas so people can go on and map some different priorities. They can also, we want them to rank the overall priority, so we know we can't do all of this. So, what we want to understand is where would you like to see us focus our efforts? So, that is really, really important. And then, of course, if you just still have other things you want to tell us, we have some open comment areas so people can give us open comments. So, let's talk first about Crab Apple and Deerfield. So, as you know, I'm gonna, I wanna orient you a little bit so that when you get to the maps, you know exactly what you're looking at. So, when you look at the Crab Apple map, this is consistent across both Crab Apple and Deerfield. If you see the orange line, that represents a sidewalk, usually five to seven feet in width, but anything less than eight. If you see the purple line, that's a side path, anything that's eight feet or wider. We distinguish between those two because a side path at eight foot or greater allows you to have biking on it, and you don't have to be, you can be over the age of 12, which otherwise, on a sidewalk, you have to be 12 or under in order to do that. So, all of those lines are solid, so when we get into the proposed recommendations, you'll see that those are dashed. So, in our target group meeting with the Crab Apple community, we got some really great feedback. We had a lot of interest in connecting the Braeburn and Heritage neighborhoods over to the schools, particularly making sure we've got some of those safety enhancements in place. We also heard about connecting Braeburn, Heritage, and Waterside neighborhoods over to the Crab Apple commercial area. So, a little bit to the, connecting to the east, a little bit connecting to the south. And then, we also did also hear from the folks who are here from Kensington that they did not want to see connections from Crab Apple into the Kensington community. So, then when you look at the proposed recommendations for Crab Apple, you can see, it's a little hard to see on the screens, but the dash lines represent all of the new connections that are being proposed. So, we have the new connection connecting over from Charlotte up to Birmingham Highway that is in the works right now. That's a new road. Beyond that, we also have new sidewalk connections, new side path connections, so those eight-foot side paths running along the side of the road. We also have an independent trail connection connecting over from Braeburn to the schools, and you'll see that's that green line that runs across the top in its own separate right-of-way. There's been a lot of enthusiasm for that trail connection, allowing the children to be able to walk more safely over to the schools. And now, if you can, you can see a little bit more zoomed in. We're also taking advantage of the power line easement on the northwest quadrant, but you can see it definitely does not go north into Kensington Farms, so we decided to truncate it at that northernmost road. Moving on to Deerfield. What you can see here, similar to the Crab Apple area, we've got the side paths and the sidewalks showing for existing conditions today. Also, good to be thinking about what we're trying to connect to, so we've got North Park, we've got Cambridge High School, as well as the other elementary and middle schools and some of the private schools along Cogburn. What we heard from the community in our Deerfield meeting is they'd really like some sidewalk connections on the western side of Cogburn. We also want sidewalks on Bethany Bend east of Highway 9 and a crossing at Bethany Bend and Sun Valley Drive. Those are just some of the highlights. Now, what you can see here, we have a number of new connections that are proposed. Part of those projects, the Highway 9 corridor, obviously, GDOT is in the process of building and designing that project. We're assuming, we're not assuming any of these are gonna take place without that Highway 9 project, so we're not planning to put those in and then take them back out again. Knowing that there are some right-of-way constraints, right now, what we're talking about is at least having a side path on one side and a sidewalk on the other. A lot of that will be obviously determined by GDOT as the design process moves forward. I would advocate Milton residents and leadership to stay engaged in that process to make sure that there is adequate sidewalk and side path opportunities along Highway 9. And you can see, we zoom in here, there's a lot of new trail and sidewalk connections along Cogburn. Cogburn is such an important road for connecting the different parks and schools. We also have, if I zoom back out for one moment, ideas for, oh, it's not, that's odd. It's on that map over there. Connections along the creek to actually go under 400 and tie over to the Big Creek Greenway. Also, in the shorter term, we have the connection along McGinnis Ferry, so Milton is looking at doing the Morris Road connection, the project, the roadway project through Tisfoss there, tying up over into the McGinnis Ferry New Interchange. And so, that's the other crossing that we've got proposed that would tie all the way over to Big Creek on the eastern side into Alpharetta. And that's the zoom in there. So, now Charlene is gonna talk about the three properties within green spaces and parks.
So, we are looking at Birmingham Park, Preserve at Cooper Sandy, and Preserve at Lucky Road, and we'll get into why that we focused on those specific locations, because as you know, there are more properties that Milton has purchased through the Green Space Bond Fund, but we did an evaluation of the properties, looking at different criteria, community assets within half a mile, population within half a mile, and different parameters to look at which locations might be best for trails. We also talked to the Trails Advisory Committee and got some input. As you know, the park at the former Milton Country Club has already gone through the planning process, and the other ones that were kind of top-ranked were Birmingham Park, which is a well-established park, so it's got those existing trails that gave it a lot of points, and then Preserve at Lucky Road and Preserve at Cooper Sandy. So, that's kinda how we narrowed that down. So, let us know if you have questions about that process later. So, we had a target group meeting focused on interior trails. This conversation included Birmingham Park, Lucky Road, and Cooper Sandy, and also a discussion about the Fulton County Schools property near the former Milton Country Club. We heard about the Fulton County Schools property from that specific group, that it should remain dormant, and, but if investment was made to keep it minimal, and that it could be a prime equestrian property for trails. So, that's the location right there. So, next, Birmingham Park, you guys are familiar with. It's 200 acres, really beautiful. We went out there in a site visit with the city and got to see the existing trails that are out there. There are 3.6 miles of trails, some of them more narrow, kind of hiking trails, and some of them wider logging roads. It's used by the equestrian community, and we met with the Equestrian Advisory Committee to get their feedback on this as well. It's used by the equestrian community, but there are also a lot of joggers, runners, people walking, dogs on leash at that facility. During that target group meeting, we heard that people wanted hiking, biking, and equestrian use, so there was interest in having a mix of users, and also, the parking was considered at this point not enough, and that there probably needed to be separated parking for equestrian trailers and then the general population, and also, safety and security were concerned for that location being a little more remote. So, as you look at this map, it's a little hard to see from, as she was saying, at this vantage point, but we'll have it down here. You can see the details. We're looking at natural surface trails. The green one is proposed to be decomposed granite, so it'd be a very natural surface. Those we put in locations that were a little bit more flat terrain, they could be more accessible, and then the orange dash line is kind of more steep terrain, and that would be native soil, so just like a dirt trail. And then, if you look underneath, there's kind of that thicker orange line, those are the existing trail locations. And you also see the dark purple is the proposed equestrian trailer parking, and the light purple, there's the south one that's a proposed new one, and then the existing one, we proposed some improvements to it. So, there potentially could be up to 122 to 145 parking spaces. That doesn't have to be that much, but it could be an up to 7.2 miles of trail. Preserve at Lucky Road is the next property. It's located in the southwest area of the city. Really beautiful property with some existing hiking trails from the previous property owners. So, about 2.7 miles, we were able to catalog. At the Interior Trails meeting, people were interested in continuing hiking and walking trails at that location, but there isn't currently formal parking there, so that's something that people wanted, but it was considered a lower priority out of the three spaces due to its location a little bit farther from the Milton population. So, we looked at adding general parking. You can kind of see that northernmost area that's a little bit bigger, and a small equestrian trailer parking area that would fit about four to five trailers. The topography is a little challenging, but it can work. Some beautiful trails there. So, potential 55 to 65 parking spaces for general, four to five for the trailer parking. A lot of the trail would be that native soil hiking trail with a little bit of the decomposed granite that's a little more accessible, and that would be right around the parking area, so people could park and, you know, walk with their kids or walk with family members with limited mobility and still get to enjoy the area. And a small boardwalk north on that northern portion of that beautiful lake there. And next is Preserve at Cooper Sandy, which is in a more central location in the city. It has existing old logging roads and some informal trails, but it's not any kind of formal formal trail system at this point, and no parking right now. But there's a great potential to build upon these two miles of informal trails and logging roads. And the community really wanted to see hiking, walking, biking. There wasn't as much interest for equestrian use at this location. But due to its central location, it could be connected to the Crab Apple and Deerfield area. It was considered a pretty high priority for that group there. So we, as you can see, the building upon what's already there, the logging, old logging roads and the informal trails, building in only general parking and no equestrian parking. So it could have up to 75 to 95 parking spaces between the two locations, and would have kind of an equal split between the native soil trails and the decomposed granite. So it's a little bit more accessible than, you know, Lackey Road or other sites. And then the next area that we're looking at is the areas of safety concern. We'll be discussing that further at our Wednesday meeting. So if that's something that people have interest in, we love to hear feedback. We're also soliciting feedback on this through our online survey, through the mapping component. So that's that part. And next steps.
All right. So we're getting into the fun stuff now. So as I mentioned, next steps from where we go from here, we're wrapping up this second phase of engagement where we are right now. And moving from September to December, looking to wrap up the whole project in December, we're going to be finishing a lot of the costing. We're doing costing work right now, trying to get a gauge on what does this look like overall. So really what you see here is our first attempt at the full build-out, recognizing this is not going to be how we move forward. We're not going to be able to do all of these things at one time. We're trying to understand what are the costs of the individual components, and what does it look like to phase some of these things in based on the priorities that we hear from the community. And so we'll be doing that as well as having some of our public outreach, both with the Milton Art Commission, and then coming back to the community through these different open house opportunities and council meetings. So that's kind of where we are. What we're looking for tonight from you is your feedback on, are we heading in the right direction for these six individual areas? Are there things that we're not considering, things that we should probably be removing, things that we're not aware of at all? And if you have general priorities on what you would like to see with each of these in terms of which ones move forward at which pace, that would also be really helpful to us. But our goal is to try to finalize the ultimate build-out as much as possible so that we can really get into the phasing and the action plan moving forward. So now it's your turn. Do we have any questions, I guess, before we get started? Or comments?
I have a question. The connection to the Big Creek Greenway, can you take me through again where that comes out of Milton?
Might be easiest to do up here.
Oh, sorry. It's, my question was, the Big Creek Greenway connection, where it comes out of Milton and meets up in, is Forsyth or Alpharetta? Just trying to get a feel for the expense that might be associated with something like that.
So we've got two different options. One is definitely more expensive and one is less expensive. So and actually, for some reason, the map up there does not show the creek trail. So if you see, and I don't think this works on the TV, you can't use your laser up there. Nope. South of Webb, north of where Morris splits off from Deerfield, the creek that runs across and crosses 400, that was, that has been talked about for many years now as an opportunity to potentially cross Georgia 400 and tie over. If you follow that creek, it would tie right into where the Big Creek Greenway connection is on the Alpharetta side. That's a longer-term discussion because obviously that one requires, it probably, we have to look more at it, but it probably has a lot of marshy type of land, so it might be a lot of boardwalk, which starts to get a little bit expensive. But it would be a completely unique kind of experience in Deerfield, recognizing that most of it, it would be much more, you know, concrete and side path type of a feel. So that would be the longer-term one. The things that are underway, the connection, so if you look at Morris Road from Webb to the north, that's a project that the city already has for T-SLOSS. And then if you follow it up to where Bethany Bend ties into McGuinness Ferry, that whole McGuinness Ferry connection with the new interchange is going to be happening with GDOT. So the good thing is, is that you already have funding set aside for the Morris improvements and the McGuinness Ferry improvements. Now, we need to make sure that the trail would be large enough on those sections to make sure that as it's getting designed, that that's properly being accommodated. But that would be, I mean, both of those projects have funding right now, and so the incremental increase in cost should not be tremendous.
Okay. So when you say they have funding, that means they include a side path?
There's probably at least some sort of sidewalk if there's not a side path already. So there might be an incremental increase in cost. We have to look at the plans for both of them, but there are sidewalks at least proposed for both projects.
Can I jump in on that?
Absolutely.
So Morris Road widening is going to include the side trail. I don't know off the top of my head what the, what the width on it currently is, but that's in the design phase right now. And that will connect across.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
I have a question. So earlier you mentioned that folks in Kensington did not want connectivity.
The folks that were at our meeting at least.
I'm sorry, what?
The folks that were at our meeting.
Right. So how is that translating across Milton with people who are contributing in other areas if they don't want connectivity? Are we, are we trying to find a majority or consensus? I mean, it's hard for us to know then exactly what people want, because it may just be the people who, you know, don't want it. But then on the other hand, they might be more engaged and others may not want it either.
So that's part of why we really depend on the network of the community to be able to get the word out, especially on things like the survey. The survey is one of the easiest ways that people can give us their feedback. As all of these progress, they're all going to go through additional public involvement processes where people, I tend to see, just in the work that we do, if we're talking higher level and longer term, people seem to be less engaged. The closer you get to somebody's personal residence, as well as the closer in time, people start getting more and more engaged at that point in time. I have a weird engineering joke, but I'm not going to make it. So I, I think that, you know, to some degree, as much as possible, we want to get people out to give us their feedback and tell us, are they interested or not? Sometimes the squeaky wheel does get the oil. So what we're hearing over the course of this and previous planning efforts is that Kensington does not want that connection. Now, if a large part of the community in Kensington comes out and says, no, actually, we would like it, then I think we need to sit down and have a conversation about what that looks like. We also may find that some of the other projects that we haven't heard any sort of opposition to or major opposition, as the time gets closer and the project becomes more real, we might start to see some of that opposition. So that's where the public process is really important. At this phase, this is kind of where we are, and we're going to be basing a lot of these improvements based on what we hear from the community. My hope is that we can reach 1,000 residents taking the survey. And that will give us, for a population size of Milton, I mean, that's a, that's a really strong number of people. It's not everybody. But it's a lot of great information that we're hearing from the community, as opposed to 20 to 40 people that might show up at a meeting.
Are we using direct mail?
I don't believe so. We're not, I don't know where Michelle went. Yeah. Yeah, it's online, but we're not, we're not mailing anything to people.
And I think Carol's question is a good question, because I know I've talked to people in Kensington Farms that do not want the trails, but that could be a minority. So it'd be interesting to know, you know, do 90% of the community want them and 10% don't? Or is it, you know, the opposite? So that would be good information to have.
I mean, if there's a way to, I don't know, water bills or anything like that, if there's a way to do that, we obviously welcome those opportunities. There's a cost associated with trying to mail out tens of thousands of pieces of paper into people's mailboxes. But it's definitely something that can be discussed.
Okay.
We welcome as much input as we can possibly receive. We ideally like it to come in online because if we're going to get tens of thousands of responses, we'd like them to not be on pieces of paper. But if we can direct people online, at least the majority of them, that helps to make the analysis a little bit easier.
Maybe it would be a combination of communicate with the HOA for the neighborhoods too, and they could disseminate some of the information.
The HOAs are on the email.
Okay.
I'm just mentioning, I've never seen anything. I've never seen anything that drives me to a website. I don't even know anybody who has.
You haven't?
It comes through our, our community newsletter. Maybe it's getting caught up in your, in your spam, but it goes out through the community newsletter. I took the survey myself. I'm not telling you my results, though.
It did just go out on Thursday of last week, so it has not, it's not been out for very long. So the fact that we have 600 people that have responded in such a short timeframe is phenomenal. But whatever we can do to help get, get it out further.
Obviously, a lot of this is conceptual as far as what are we going to do from a high-level perspective, but people would love to see anything get opened as quickly as possible. So, but obviously, from a phasing perspective, could you explain that process? Are we talking about length of trails, or obviously, cost of trails is associated, but you know, there are some that say, we don't want to spend a lot of money to open the trails, but that would allow us to open them, right? Explain that phasing process of what we need to consider as we go through this.
And this is a similar process to what we talked about with the former Milton Country Club, that we can do some things just to kind of get the basics done, to make sure that people can get out there, they can safely traverse the property. So especially, for instance, on the green space properties, there are a lot of existing trails today. We've been out there, we've hiked a lot of them, walked a lot of them, mapped a lot of them with GPS units. So we can start with a lot of that kind of stuff. Maybe we need some minor parking areas in order to be able to give people an opportunity, a place, a way to come and park. But we may need to do some cleanup on some of the existing trails. I know the Equestrian Committee has done a lot of work on inventorying the trails in Birmingham Park and identifying some of the clearing that needs to be done, you know, fixing some different things, signage, some basic signage. So part of the phasing process that we'll be looking at is kind of what are the bare minimum things that we need to do? And we might find that we don't need to do a lot to Cooper Sandy, or to Lackey, or to Birmingham to kind of get them just open, I mean, Birmingham's already open, obviously, but Lackey and Cooper, get them up open so that people can get out there easily. It's not going to be the end-all, be-all. We like to talk about Lackey as one of the examples. That boardwalk that Charlene mentioned that goes out over the lake, that's a longer-term thing. It's going to cost more money, it's going to require more engineering. The connection over to Arnold Mill, that's also a longer-term thing. So those are maybe like a phase three for Lackey as opposed to phase one. We don't need to do that right-of-way. It's a nice-to-have at the end, maybe not a have-to-have at the beginning.
Next question I have is ADA compliance. So obviously, we have to have some ADA compliance because there are taxpayer dollars involved in this as well. As we do the phasing, how do we balance that? Do we do it in a synergy of a percentage of ADA versus non-ADA, or do we do it as much as we can as we plan? How does that work for ADA?
I mean, I think, I don't know that there's any sort of absolute requirements. I would say it's probably a policy decision on the part of the council. We've termed them, we haven't termed them as ADA-accessible trails. We've termed them as more moderate trails. Those are the ones that are going to have the decomposed granite versus the native surface, the soil, the dirt that's out there. They're probably also, they're more, they're flatter, so they're going to be easier for people to traverse. Whether or not we want to actually make them ADA-accessible officially, especially within the green spaces. Now, on Deerfield and Crab Apple, totally different story. Those, the sidewalks and the side paths, those do need to be ADA-accessible. But when you're starting to get into the green spaces, it's a different kind of a conversation. So I think Deerfield and Crab Apple, separate, we need to be focusing on ADA compliance there. In the green spaces, I would say that it's largely up to you, but Steve's going to insert.
It is something we're focusing on. One of the primary areas we're looking at right now is the former Milton Country Club, to see how much we could really make that accessible. There are areas that are, that lend themselves because of topography, that make it quite easy, and others that don't. But we are, we do have a city policy of making these accessible, and we're going to try to maximize that. But the, at the end of the day, 100% accessibility is probably not probable.
Right. Is there, is there a, just from an education perspective, is there a federal ratio that we should keep in mind as we do this, or no? I just wasn't sure.
So there, to be, I'm a little outside my, my area of expertise, but to the, to best of my knowledge, you are considered ADA-accessible if X percentage of your, of your trail system is accessible. Doesn't have to be 100%. Might be a little off on that. I can do further research, but I, that's, I know that's what we're looking to achieve, at least in the former Milton Country Club.
I wasn't sure if it was a 20% or what was that? I just didn't know. So, just a question.
We'll dig deeper and I'll get you all the information on that.
Okay.
Laura?
One, one other comment. Just, I, I understand that we have 2.8 million in T-SLOSS dollars to spend on connectivity.
Tier one.
Tier one, okay. So just my opinion is that for that, that connectivity, I'd like to see it go towards our biggest areas of density, for example, Crab Apple and Deerfield. You know, try not to see people on Cogburn Road walking on it, you know, what looks like a goat path because it's so worn and well-used. Those also tie into safety concerns. So I think that if we spend that money there, it will be well-used, and that's where I'd like to see it. In addition to, you know, we have limited funds and we want to be, use them wisely. So I'd like to, you know, for example, if we can concentrate money in Birmingham Park for equestrian, you know, get some water out there, restrooms, trailer parking, see how it's used before we, you know, widespread do this in other areas, make sure that it's going to be used. I know it will be used, but it'd be good to make sure. Same with the ADA compliance. Providence Park is coming online as our, you know, ADA-compliant park, and hopefully it will be well-used. But I think those trials will give us a better idea as to how things can be, you know, further expanded across the city.
That's a great point. And also, just one comment on the T-SLOSS. The T-SLOSS dollars must be used for transportation-related trails and sidewalks. So we won't be able to use them within the green spaces because they're not providing a transportation benefit. They're only providing a recreation benefit. So Deerfield and Crab Apple of these areas would be, along with some of the safety areas, would be the ones that would be appropriate for T-SLOSS usage, so that, that fits well.
And just to summarize that, my last point was going to be, you know, if those T-SLOSS dollars go there, the Milton Country Club, I'm hearing from people that they want that to be the priority for, you know, our, our capital expenditures into 2020 and this year, so.
Okay.
Stacy, do we have any, do we have any public comment on this? And I want to make sure those in the audience have, I believe you had time to look at these, but if, if anybody would like to, you know, as we're looking at these, if anybody, after hearing some discussion, would like to take a minute or so to look at these maps, I'd be glad to open up for that. Anybody have any interest in?
Thank you very much. Thank you guys for your time.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if, if council wants to take a look at any other questions and comments. Go ahead.
So, so I was under the impression that this would be the time now where council came up and was able to take a closer look, mark up the maps, things along those lines. That was, that was, was my understanding.
Because you need some direction.
Well, we gave, we gave, I gave feedback earlier, so I appreciate it.
So Mayor, it's, it's up to you and council whether you would like to go and do a hands-on exercise.
Again, if any members of the audience here too would like to take another look, and be glad to take any feedback, citizens too. So council want to take a minute, take a look?
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
People talking, of course.
Oh, no kidding. Does that blow up the river?
Yeah.
Is she still alive?
Oh gosh, yeah, she's still alive and 71 years old.
Where is she?
Vegas.
That's so cool.
... 12,000 feet. She's been on the chief's trail line, which is only for two years. Was the chief photographer of that, recovered her pictures, been the cover of Western Washington. I've been riding the cliffs.
I mean...
All right, are the, we on? Okay. Steve, I want to see if it's possible, and so also for the public to have more time to comment, but also if we can have these available and at your leisure of, say, the next week, council can come by and look if they have any more thoughts or get any more feedback and discuss some of these plans, if that's all right.
Sounds like a great idea. How about we put it, the only table I think we would have large enough for these would be in the GIS room in the back, when you walk in by the staff entrance. I'll put it on that, I'll put them on that big table in there and leave all the markers out there and you can come in at your leisure.
Okay. If you have, yeah, interest and time doing that, you know, please let Steve know if you need more time or, or whatever. And we'll get our staff to be available for comments and ideas on that, so. No. Do we need the tables? Do we need, do we need to actually move? Presenter, okay. All right, Stacy, if you could please sound the next agenda item.
Next item is discussion of Chapter Four, Alcoholic Beverages of the City of Milton Code. Sarah Ladart.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Turn it on.
Look, that's on.
Mayor and Council, I have with me tonight Michelle Stumpy with Taylor English. She is who we have retained to help us with the brainstorming portion of our Chapter Four evaluation. And we, you all received a list of things that came from our first meeting with a targeted list of developers and leasing agents and staff who have been dealing with the alcoholic beverage license and process for the past several years. And just some of our first kind of look at what we have seen as problems and what we would like to see in the future. And so Michelle is just going to go over that with you guys, with council tonight.
All right, well, good evening. Thank you for having me here. And we look forward to working with you to look at the possibilities of revising the alcohol ordinance. And the purpose of this meeting, from my perspective, is to really get a good understanding and a good feel of how the city, the city's perspective on this ordinance and some of the issues that you've seen that you would like to make sure are addressed as we move into the following phases. We do have, I think, a public comment or a public meeting that's scheduled, two public meetings that are scheduled for October the first. So what we did initially with this list that you guys have been given is to really just try and, I don't know if there's a better way to do this, to... I might even just talk loudly in that.
For recording, do we have to?
Yeah, recording, okay. So I'll try and maybe hold it away a little bit. Can everybody hear me okay? All right. So just kind of going through, and I would love, as we go through these outlined topics, if anyone has any questions or thoughts or concerns, just jump in. I think that was why the setup was made this way, so it could be very informal. So just in talking to staff, some of the overriding principles that I've gathered that are of interest to the city are, first, we want to make sure that our citizens are protected. We want to make sure we're protecting minors from being sold alcohol, crime that's related to alcohol and over-serving even of legally aged persons, making sure that we don't have a lot of intoxicated patrons being over-served. But then there's also a balance of being more business-friendly, making sure that when we have businesses who are legitimately a good business for the city, making the process more simple and direct and also clarifying the ordinance so that it's very clear and there's not a lot of questions there. It's easier to regulate something that's, that's clear than it is to regulate something that there may be a lot of questions about. Then the third component is for staff and for the city, making the ordinance and making the process more efficient and making sure that we continue with the economic viability to the extent that there are additional requirements, that there's also additional fees that can help cover the cost, any additional costs. But making sure that we do that in a, in a feasible kind of way. It's my understanding that there's not an interest in having the kind of nightclub, late-night establishment scene or adult entertainment, but that the city does want to encourage innovative, quality, responsible establishments that promote a diverse mix of reputable and responsible clientele. Obviously, everything will be measured against the state's minimum standards to make sure that that's completely consistent. In my initial reviews, I did find a couple of inconsistencies, so I'd recommend that you clean those up. And then one of the discussions that we had with the Chief of Police was clarifying who's responsible for different enforcement aspects, so that not only do retailers know, but the city knows who has the responsibility for different aspects of the ordinance. We've got the issue of the special district areas. Currently, it's my understanding that there's really not any portion of the city that's not in that special district. But what about two years from now? Create an ordinance that takes into consideration potential changes that the city might have and making sure that we address that as we move forward. And then another kind of more specific topic, a question that came up, was how do we want to address the alcohol-infused items? And is that something that the city wants to take into consideration? So the kind of first thing that we started in was the types of licenses. Currently, the city has a number of different types of licenses. There are some that aren't listed in the application. So for example, the ordinance talks about an ancillary license. If I have a wine shop, for example, an ancillary tasting license, and the ordinance says that I could get one, but yet the application doesn't have that. So really looking at the ordinance, making sure that it has everything that we want, but then also making the applications model that so that the, the staff has an easier opportunity to, to capture that, but also to bring in the revenue from that. If there's an additional license, then our licenses all have a fee associated with them. So there's an interest in that. I did have a couple of questions and, you know, I think we can open it up. So for example, with the on-premise licenses, there is an incidental license. And it's my understanding that that license, the intent is for your hair salons, for your kind of locations that might serve a glass of wine to a guest, might want to have just a small amount of alcohol, so that the city has the ability to regulate that. It's not a big cost item, it's not a big portion of the business. But one of the things that I noticed about it was that it precludes anyone who has, who sells food from having this type of license. And then the question comes up, because you see in other jurisdictions that are similar to Milton, like Roswell or Alpharetta or Woodstock, you have a cheese shop. So if you have a cheese shop that sells cheese, would the city want to have that cheese shop have the ability to occasionally have a cheese tasting with wine? And so I guess my question is, was there an intent behind the incidental license to specifically preclude any business that sells food at all? Or is it more of a matter of, look, if you're going to sell food as a meal, as a prepared foods, then we want to make sure that you've got a more meaningful license. You're not going to just get away with having this low-cost kind of incidental license.
I would say from my perspective, I don't think, or that I'm aware of an intent to, to, you know, cut a use like that out, using cheese shop for an example. So again, I'm not sure what the rest of the council's thoughts are on that, but...
I'd say the same thing as what the mayor said. And I think, haven't we done some, we've done individual licenses where someone wants to be able to serve alcohol occasionally or for an event when that's not their primary business? I think we've done that. But if you, what you're talking about is maybe changing the ordinance so it makes it more compatible, so you can do that? Is that what we're talking about here?
Right, so you have done that. You have done that and you can do that in a lot of different situations. But you, under your current, current ordinance, you could not do it if the business were to also sell food.
Okay.
So, and so part of this is helping me to understand kind of where... So, and so part of this is helping me to understand kind of where your intent lies. And by answering some of these questions, I think it will help me as I'm going through and as we're having the public meetings to make sure that we're on the same kind of wavelength.
You know, and if you don't mind, I'll just go ahead and start and just tell you my thoughts and I'm certainly interested in what you've got. And Sarah, you know, feedback that you've gotten from, from our businesses and our citizens, you know, from my perspective, you know, number one, you made a statement about we want to make sure we have responsible ordinances and safety for our citizens and children and, and whatnot. But I also feel like, you know, City of Milton has a very limited commercial area. We want to have the quality of life and things, you know, events and whatnot for our citizens to enjoy. So without the lack of a better term, I'd like to see us on the cutting edge of, you know, having responsible ordinances, but also that allow people to, you know, the latest and greatest on what seemed to be the trend for, for, you know, people in a business situation or, or a festival type or, you know, a downtown center. So again, you know, if some of the Council's got some thoughts too, that might just give you a little bit of direction moving forward.
Yeah, I'm just, we're trying not to provide loopholes in our existing ordinance. So any kind of cleanup or, or disintegration that we can do, I think would be good. But I think our goal wasn't to be too wordy in terms of what we were trying to express, but we certainly saw areas where, okay, we need to tighten this up just to make sure that we're not accidentally creating a backdoor for, for certain uses.
I would agree with what they're saying over there. I, looking at the code, it seems like we're, we're trying to be very specific to individual circumstances, to what's, what someone's trying to do with their location. Yet I think our residents are more concerned about intensity of use more than anything else. And just an idea to maybe clean it up, you know, why don't we have a tier system where these events fit under Tier One, these events fit under Tier Two, these events are under Tier Three, or something like that. And that way, as, as one, a business owner, if you are going to apply, you're not, you know, they might do several within one tier, but they don't have to go through multiple processes to go through that, you know. I think it would clean up the understanding of what it involves. And then two, from a, from a regulation perspective, we know exactly where they fit if they do anything above and beyond at a greater intensity than, then we are achieving the objective of trying to make sure that we're regulating it accordingly. So just a thought.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I'll say I agree with everything that they said and also, like you mentioned, looking at Alpharetta, Roswell and Woodstock, they're those vibrant downtowns. I want to make sure we're not missing anything that'd be competitive with them.
And that, that was kind of my point early too. I, I agree. I don't, you know, I'd hate to see new businesses here or citizens and say, well, you know, we want to go there because they can do that, not here, that kind of thing, as long as we keep it responsible.
Right, exactly. I think the, the concept that we've been discussing is, we're not, we don't want to try and reinvent the wheel. That's costly and it's just not smart, but we want to tweak the wheels that are out there and put them all together and make the better car. And I think we can do that. Just as a little bit of background to mention, I, I was actually, I started off representing a lot of retailers in alcohol violation hearings, so I'm very familiar with all the loopholes. And then the Council on Alcohol and Drugs hired me about 20 years ago to work with a number of different jurisdictions throughout the state of Georgia to clean up all those loopholes so that I couldn't win anymore. And, but that's, that's the part that I enjoy is really, because for, for everyone, for the citizens, for the retailers, for the community, it, it's not good to have loopholes. It's, it's so much better when everybody knows what to expect and that everybody's working from the same intent. One of the things that I noticed as well is that there's a definition for special event facility, but then there's really not a lot of discussion about what that looks like in the ordinance. And so I'm curious about the Council's thoughts with respect to wedding venues and special event facilities and what you'd like to see in that regard, because it's, it's really not addressed very cohesively, I don't think, in the ordinance as it stands.
Are you talking just about alcohol with that or as a whole?
Well, from my perspective, as alcohol, but from, as, a lot of times the whole kind of feeds into the alcohol portion. We want to make sure that, one of the things that, that Sarah and I had talked about is that there's some inconsistency, for example, between the alcohol ordinance and the zoning ordinance. So to the extent that there are other aspects of it, then I think it's worth discussing.
I mean, I think, I think you can treat the event facility and the alcohol separately. I mean, you can have an event and not have alcohol, though that's rare, right? But, you know, so if you're talking about alcohol, I, I think again, intensity is what matters, especially with regards to where it is from a zoning perspective. But also too, I think, you know, in some areas, I got to say this, I had an idea last week, I talked with my appointee on the Equestrian Committee. You know, I'd love to see if you have a special event happening in AG1 and if your property abuts in AG1 zoning, that you got to get a sign off from the Equestrian Committee to make sure that we have our animals protected as well, because that is a big part of what we are. So just a thought that I had, but that's not alcohol-related.
Could be, but it could be. That's, one of the great opportunities is that when you have a special event facility or a, a type of license that is going to have maybe an inconsistent type of use, then you can tie in that you've got those, those special approvals and, and the City of Atlanta has a property owner's affidavit. So there could be something that we understand that this is the type of use and this is, we don't have a problem with it and you have that sign off. And it would be something that the, the Mayor and Council could consider. And, you know, it might be that we talk about to what level that is required as mandatory. You want to protect your businesses from somebody who just has bad blood, but it's something certainly that can be part of the application and can be part of the consideration of the application.
So, sorry, I just want to clarify. So are you saying the zoning conditions would not sup, I mean, so you're saying our zoning conditions are alcohol ordinance, they don't see eye to eye, I'm assuming, or are you, are you saying what, are you saying what would we want to supersede each other or?
So if we create a license, so say we create the special event license, we just want to make sure that under the usage portion in the zoning, which is separate chapter 64, that we don't create a license that isn't allowed to be used anywhere. Does that make sense?
Kind of.
Kind of, okay.
Let me just offer this up. So how are we going to deal with noise at special event facilities? I've never been to a wedding that was quiet.
And that's something that you can also put in there. Many, many jurisdictions do have, you've got the noise ordinance and you have a certain way that it can be measured. And if you're going to be a special event facility, then part of the condition of the license is that you have to comply with the noise ordinance. And failure to comply with the noise ordinance can result in a suspension of your alcohol license or can also result in that event being shut down.
Can I just point a clarification? There's a special use permit and there's a special event permit. Special use, use permit would be for an ongoing facility, a special event permit would be the one that would be limited to twice per year. The special use permit, which would be basically a zoning action, is you'd be able to dictate sound levels, things like that. Those would be, those would be contingent upon you, you allowing the use permit. Whereas a, whereas a special event permit would be governed by the, the city's current noise ordinance. Is that helpful?
Yeah.
And so you could, with the special use, you would be able to say how often they would be able to hold an event?
A special use, and I'm, I'm jumping into Ken's bailiwick here, but a special use permit, you would be able to determine the conditions by which they would be able to operate under that special use permit.
And part of, part of the confusion may be due to my references as well, because a lot of jurisdictions call them different things. But generally, I, I think the better terminology would be an events facility as opposed to a special event facility. Because an events facility is one where they're not having to get a special event permit every single time. It's an event facility that's open for weddings, that's open for bat mitzvahs, whatever type of event, whatever type of use it is.
You know, and this is just a, talking about special events facility, and if we want to address this, this is a situation that's come and gone, but I know we were contacted where, I guess, one of the persons that had rented out the special use, it's a wedding, but wanted to bring their own alcohol. But, you know, our ordinance would not let them. So I don't know if that's, you know, something that we would want to address in there or whatever. Obviously, the facility could work out whatever their charges were, but I, I know, I guess the, the person that had the wedding was connected in the alcohol, you know, could bring their own, but our ordinance wouldn't let them. So I don't know if there's any, you know, I don't know if that'll ever happen again, but if that's something that's common or, or we should include something to say yes or no on, or, or consider changing that or not. I don't, it's up to Council.
Do y'all have any, any thoughts about that? It's handled different ways in different jurisdictions. A lot of jurisdictions do have a, and, and you guys have something similar to this, but a BYOB license, which would be a separate license that an organization, even a restaurant, could obtain that wants to rent out a facility and then allow all of the alcohol to be brought on by somebody else. Now, one of the things that I, I would recommend changing is, there's a little bit of confusion with respect to the BYOB license in the ordinance. Because when other people bring alcohol onto the premises under state law, really the facility shouldn't touch it. And there's a requirement in here that the facility bag it back up and seal it. So it's kind of a crossover between BYOB and Merlot to Go. And so that would be something that, those are the types of things that I would recommend cleaning up a little bit. I think if you read it a couple of times, it starts to, it, it makes sense. But just that simplifying so that it's easy to understand on that first read. But what, what are the thoughts about having businesses, particularly event facilities, have an opportunity either to serve alcohol themselves or to allow a party to, to bring their own?
All right, I'm thinking out loud here, which is always dangerous, especially when it's being recorded. But going back to zoning, where you have our classifications in different zoning areas, right? You know, if, if you have a, again, I don't know why the idea just resonates with me, but if you have some kind of a tier system, you can designate certain tiers that could be put into those zoning classifications, right? On a grander scale, just thinking about that. Again, designated by intensity. If you have a special event facility, I don't think that facility can really be approved unless it went through a special use permit vote by the Council anyway, right? So we, under legislative capacity, have the ability to dictate legislation on any particular piece of property through that, right? So that technically wouldn't fit in the zoning criteria, although we would consider that if we thought of it in that route. Now, the special event, special use permit, it's a different story. You know, that's a two-time-per-year event that happens in a building in that zoning classification, right? So, am I saying that right? Say that again.
The special use is a permit.
Correct, correct. Which is a legislative one that the Council would vote on. The special permit application, not special use permit, special permit, special event permit, is not a Council-approved decision, right? I would love, like I said, on the AG1, the only zoning thing I would love to see is that goes before a vote for the Equestrian Committee on that end. But if you have a tier of what's allowed from an alcohol perspective, from an intensity perspective, you know, that can be in the zoning criteria for anybody who applies for a permit for that separately. So I don't think it needs to be that complicated. I just think it needs to be, you know, specific to what the zoning is, unless it goes before us for a special use permit, that then we change the legislation on that property, if we do or don't.
Yeah, and as soon as we're sitting here trying to think of what scenarios we need to cover, we're going to have to cover all scenarios. So if, no matter what permit or criteria that they have to operate, we're going to have to give them the option of getting something they don't have or excluding something they do have. So we just need to cover all the bases.
Yeah, and that's, and we, we had talked about that as well, kind of this concept of trying to think about everything that we can at the moment and then using that to help craft a broader definition as well that allows for the city to make exceptions, make restrictions. But without having to change the ordinance every single time, without having to, to do an amendment every single time. And then, but also tie into that, that was why I went over those general overriding principles to begin with. Because that helps, if, if we're all on the same page with that, that helps me to craft the things that it's not. Not only what it might be, but also what it can't be.
Yeah, and the only thing I'd add in there is where it's based on an exception. So normally they don't have something unless they come to us and ask and they want special permission. As much as we can provide city staff with the power to make those decisions under certain circumstances, I think that would be beneficial, because there's no reason for us to have to put that through to a vote for the Council or something like that. Not that we do that on a regular basis, but it's happened.
So that brings up a question. One of the things that I see in different jurisdictions, it runs the gamut with respect to Council's involvement in the alcohol licensing process. In some jurisdictions, to get an alcohol license, you have to go to the neighborhood and you have to go to the sub-neighborhood and you have to go to the License Review Board and then it has to go to the Mayor and the Mayor has to let it sit on their desk and then it gets issued. In other jurisdictions, as long as the license application, license application goes to the Police Department, as long as the application meets all of the requirements, the city manager makes the decision. And only if it doesn't, and there's an exception that needs to be made, maybe it's a distance waiver or something else, only if it doesn't, does it then go before a review board and then to Council.
I've been sitting on the Council for 10 years. I can't remember one time we ever denied an alcohol license, because staff doesn't give us things that are debatable. They give us things that are, it's past all the criteria, we've examined it this way and that way, everything is met. And so it's really just, I don't want to call it a rubber stamp, because we're, we're not rubber stamping it, but we just don't get into huge debates about should they or shouldn't they? We just say, well, if they've met all the criteria, we're going to approve it.
Council, Longory, there's, there's plenty of instances in Georgia law, the Platte Act is a perfect example, that you never see a platte until it's pretty much perfect.
Right.
But the Council still has to pass upon it. So the only thing I might, I might offer is, there is a certain level of accountability and transparency that comes from having that done at a public meeting, which I like. I think it places all of this in an environment where the public gets to see who gets to do what and when. And even though it may seem sort of like a rubber stamp, I'm not disagreeing with your nomenclature at all. I do think there is some utility in having the Council pass upon those. Just something to think about as we're going through this.
Right, well, I mean, I certainly don't want to give up any responsibilities that are really ours to manage.
Well, no, I mean, I don't disagree. I don't know, I don't think there's any requirement that City Council has to do this, particularly when the applications are complete. I, I think that's exactly true and correct. I just, I question whether or not that's something we want to put on the city manager, because I don't think it's a whole lot of effort for the Council to do it. And I do think it provides a nice documentary memorialized paper trail of what's occurred.
So, just to play devil's advocate a little bit.
I would be disappointed if we didn't.
What happens, what happens under those conditions where we have to rescind an alcoholic beverage license? Do we even do that or is that something the state does?
Well, no, if there's violations of our code, we have every right to revoke a permit.
Who does that?
Well, the Council would.
So it goes back to the Council? Because I haven't, I haven't sat through one of those discussions before.
Well, that's because I think that there has not been a situation in Milton that has triggered that.
I was just making sure that was our decision as well, because if that decision wasn't ours, then I was going to argue that, well, why do we get to give them permission, but we don't get to take it away?
Right, fair, touche. I think there was only one time we came close to that without naming the business, but it had to do with, with business license and payment and fees. And then that was one of the things that we could do, we could pull to essentially cut that down, because they weren't paying the fees that they were supposed to. But other than that.
And I agree. I like this discussion, you know, basically, in essence, it's going through staff. So staff is really approving, technically not approving it, but approving it, making sure it's all meets the requirements, which is all we're asking for. But I like the, you know, as Ken said, one more step, as long as it's advertised publicly and, and we at least make the decision publicly. That way, everybody does know, you know, what the decision, the formal decision is.
To both of your points, the reason that you all are always passing upon these is because staff's not, it's not getting to you. because staff's not, it's not getting to you until it's ready.
They're not gonna bring, they're not gonna, the ones that didn't pass, they're not coming to us.
Right.
So just a couple of quick little things about that that may also provide some assistance or background. One of the things I will say, from a business perspective, the fact that you do have the opportunity for a temporary license, that takes away a lot of the concern that retailers have from having to wait for that council decision. So that's something that you are doing, that I would recommend that you continue to do. Most jurisdictions do charge for a temporary license, which, from my background with retailers, I think you can justify doing. But one of the other thoughts is, if you wanted to, a number of jurisdictions will put, to the extent that the business license office and the police recommend approval, you can put them on a consent agenda at the beginning of the meeting, and that way you can, if there's any concern about something, you can take it off of the consent agenda. But that may also address some of your, you know, just efficiency.
I'm laughing only because those are some of the items that we voted on so quickly, it's not even funny. So consent agenda or not, those get passed pretty fast.
Yeah. You also mentioned something about the violations, and there's, some, I'm, the ordinance is a little bit unclear as to what portion of the violation is handled at the magistrate court level and what part of the violation would be handled by council. And so I don't know that that's a topic for tonight, but I do think that that's something that I'd like to hear more from the council as to how involved you want to be and so that we can clean that up and make sure that we're doing it in a way that's of interest to you. I know that we're limited on time. I did want to ask about, and keep the, keep the conversation going, everybody, if you don't have it, we can get you my email address, I'm open for telephone calls, any thoughts that you might have. One of the questions that came up was the concept of microbreweries and micro-distilleries. Is that something that the council is interested in considering and being open to?
Yes.
I would, I would say yes, again, going back to, if it's, you know, cutting edge and, you know, the trends now, we wouldn't want to exclude our businesses.
So does our current ordinance cover micro pubs?
It covers brew pubs. So a brew pub is, they, it's similar to a microbrewery, but they have more of a restaurant component. But you don't cover microbreweries, which don't serve food.
Right.
So it would be a question of that. The other thing...
I would like to look into that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Another, another thing that I've seen, and I'm just curious about, because this is, it's one that people have different opinions about, and that is the, particularly in your special entertainment district, the walk-up window. The ability to not have to go in, but to be able to walk up and have a limited, in most jurisdictions that have, that have the allowed walk-up window, you've got different things to know where the alcohol came from. Citizens are already able to take alcohol out of the establishment. And do you have the opportunity to walk up to the window and get a beer and a taco, or do you have to go into the establishment? I know in Alpharetta, there's a number of different jurisdictions in that new area that you can walk up, and so I'm just curious about the thoughts here.
Wait, what do you mean, special entertainment district?
It's, what do you guys call it?
The open container area.
Yeah, the open container district, I'm sorry, I'm used to calling it something else. But yeah, the open container area.
The open container area. The open container area. Right. I think that's not a major one.
I like the idea, I mean, as long as, you know, they can make sure they card everybody and, you know, we follow all the rules, but...
The moment we don't include it, we're gonna need it, so we may as well include it.
Okay, now, let's take it a step further. The drive-up window for sealed, sealed beverages.
Oh, not bad.
It's something that the state just recently passed, and so you're going to start seeing that come up a little bit more. And so I just want to throw that out there, because we're starting to see it, and is that something that we want to?
What does that look like? Are we talking like a, you can...
A beer bar?
A beer bar.
It is, it's not Starbucks for alcohol. No, it's not Starbucks for alcohol, it's more, it's not even, you know, the typical McDonald's, Wendy's kind of concept. It is, the alcohol is packaged, the alcohol is sealed, so it would be like going to a liquor package store or a convenience store and going and getting your six-pack of beer, but instead of having to get out of your car, you can drive up and...
I think they have that in drive-apple, but it's not in Milton, but it's basically a drive-through window.
It's basically a drive-through package store.
I mean, I know, I know they do have, I'm trying to think, I'm trying to think that, if that commercial spot with the liquor store...
Let's put that one on the agenda for later.
I would say, you know, keep that on...
Part of this is to get you thinking.
Keep that on, keep that on the back burner for, but yeah, probably not too much interest in promoting that.
Mr. Mayor, I just really got a question. How does our, does the Milton, I just haven't looked at it, but you've got me thinking with that question right there. So the, the whole trend of being able to order your groceries and the baggers, they put it all together, they meet you out of the parking lot with the alcohol, so a lot of folks have touched it now. How do we, how do we deal with that, or do we at all? Is it addressed?
So the, the state law on that just recently changed.
That's right.
And currently, the way that it changed is, you can now do curbside service from the standpoint of, I can have a bag boy or I can have somebody assist you to your car with alcohol. It used to be that I couldn't have an employee touch it outside of the store.
Correct.
Now, my employee can touch it outside of the store, you can call ahead, it can be ready for you. However, under the state law, it still prohibits delivery. So unlike Kroger, where I can call and I can get my groceries delivered for $10, I can't do that with alcohol. And Kroger would not be, if I wanted to put in my order for Kroger to send me a bottle of wine in my $10 delivery, they would not be able to do that under state law currently.
But are you seeing local governments change their local codes, even if it's allowed at the state level, the curbside? Are they having to still go ahead and do modifications for that? Or are they just saying, no, we'll just concede and yield to the state allowance for that? I've just seen that in some other jurisdictions, where a lot of jurisdictions say the sale and delivery have to be in the premise.
Right.
And then you start to walk it out into the parking lot, depending upon how you've defined premise, that could be a violation of your local code. I just didn't know if, I haven't just, I haven't reviewed Milton's on that specific issue yet.
It's a relatively new state law, and so I haven't seen a whole lot of jurisdictions addressing it.
Right.
Generally, you have the ability to be more strict than state law, but you can never be less strict than state law. So for example, you could not allow delivery of alcohol in Milton. However, if you wanted to, you could say, you know what, in Milton, you can't take it out to the curb. You must take it within the four walls of the premises.
So right now, our, with our current ordinances or with state law, does it prohibit the purchase of an alcoholic beverage through a drive-up window? Because technically, you're selling it on premise, and you're just handing it to the person who's standing right outside your premise.
Right, so the, there, I don't think, I haven't looked at the ordinance, because this just kind of came up in my head today. I don't think there's something that would specifically prohibit that in the Milton ordinance in the open container area.
Because I would suggest where it's not prohibited, it's happening.
In a lot of cases, yes.
I'm just saying.
And, and that's part of the, part of the strategy behind this, is where do we, recognizing what might happen if we don't have a direct prohibition and being okay with that?
Yeah.
And trying to have an ordinance that's broad enough to allow certain things without having to identify each and everything we want to allow, but also making sure we talk through these things to understand if there's something we don't want, that we address that as well.
I think the thing that bothers, the thing that bothers me on that is, obviously, the transaction is happening while someone's in a car, basically, or drive, walk up or whatever. I think that, you know, if someone goes to a grocery store and hasn't bagged whatever, there's other items there, et cetera, from that perspective, but, you know, I think that, I feel, I just feel uncomfortable for a drive-up window just for that purpose, and that's, is there a distinction, can someone take it in their car and drive it home? You know, I understand that, but for whatever reason, that, that act just bothers me, and that's all I can say about it.
Good.
Just so that I'm clear, I think we had two different topics. One was a walk-up window for alcoholic beverages that I'm going to consume. We're now talking about a drive-up window for closed, sealed, unopened, because someone in a car legally cannot open that container, they're, they're in violation of laws.
Correct.
Then it's open container and they could be arrested. But what you're talking about is, do we want to codify the ability to have, let's say, a liquor store be able to have a drive-up window to actually do it? What I'd ask us to do is go back and look at whether or not we already have one of those in Milton off from Highway 9, because I can tell you a thing that I think is part of Milton, that that already exists.
And that may be, it's, it's less, and you're correct, we are talking about two different things. The first topic was the on-premise walk-up, which I think we all discussed, we felt comfortable with in the open container area. And then I took you a step further to say, what if this situation...
I think we need to address it, but not sure if we want to make that decision right now.
Right, now, and, and none of, this is, like I said, it's really an open discussion that helps me to assess and think about as we go through the next public session, and then I can present to you with, here are the different options, but at least I have a, an idea of where you guys are thinking and where your heads are at.
Okay.
Oh, I forgot. Sorry. My only comment, sorry.
The third part to that was, do we want to allow the Kroger pickup people to be allowed to walk the alcohol out to the car? The state just allowed that.
Or in the case Walmart or...
Right, right.
Or public.
Well, they're already offering those services, the question is, do they include alcohol as part of the coverage?
Right, so previously, alcohol was not allowed to be carried out to the car, now it is. Do we want to...
Change that in Milton.
Right, do we want to allow that in Milton?
My opinion is that, no, if it's, the state allows it and Kroger allows it, and they're doing it elsewhere, I'm just saying, that's not, I don't know with the rest of the council, but, you know, I don't know that if we're different.
Yeah, it's a little bit hypocritical. I can walk in and buy and walk out with it, but I can't let somebody else do it for me. That doesn't make any sense.
You can't do that when you're younger, though, right? No, you pay someone to do it.
Well, well, if you think about it, though, you know, now I can order my alcohol from an app, drive up, and someone will deliver it, and there's never been sort of, what are the safeguards and the protocols with respect to IDing, et cetera? I mean, it just, it does create its own set of issues, and the reason...
That's a program ID, right?
Well, yeah, but we're the regulatory entity with respect to Kroger, and so, you know, we have the right to set the rules. I mean, that's, that's...
And so what is the rule with regards to that? Because to the best of my knowledge, all they have to do is, a person has to look at your ID and say, yeah, you're okay.
Yeah, the state rule is, is for somebody who is providing alcohol as a curb pickup, they have the same obligation that somebody would, a cashier would, inside. So there's still the same expectation. If they fail to, if they, if they provide alcohol to a minor in that scenario and they don't verify that that person is old enough to legally buy, then they can be cited, and that can happen both at the local and the state level.
Yeah, if anything, ordering it through an app might be a step up in terms of authentication of who you are and whether or not you're of legal age.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that, you know, at least you consider that.
That might be.
Yeah, it sounds more of an education of the retailers on what they can do, because when did the sale occur? Usually, you get ID before they make the sale, but if I'm doing an online order and it's going to be delivered out to me, I've already done the transaction, but they haven't delivered the product until they ID me. But that may be, as the laws change, that may be something that actually, that's more of a retailer, I think, issue that they need to understand.
Well, and that's, actually, you bring up another aspect, and that question is, do you want to implement any type of mandatory retailer education? Right now, you don't have anything. There are a number of jurisdictions, you have mitigating circumstances, they're expected to educate their employees with respect to the Milton ordinance, but many jurisdictions have a mandatory responsible alcohol sales and service workshop that at least the licensee has to attend or have mandatory employee training. Some jurisdictions mandate, these are the approved training providers. Some jurisdictions say these are the topics that you have to cover. Some jurisdictions say you just simply have to provide responsible alcohol sales and service training to your employees. Some require the manager...
Is there some kind of state requirement that's associated with...
No, no.
Nothing.
There is no state requirement for training, either of the managers, the owners, or the employees.
So right now, we're at the minimum levels?
Correct.
What you're suggesting or saying could be an option is similar to what is a legal obligation for a food and beverage organization that sells alcohol. The server, before they are licensed to do it, they have to go through education to be certified. And I know it's that way, I think, in Milton, and it probably is a state law. Is that a state law, Ken, or...
I'm sorry.
It's not a state law. It is a state law in places like Texas, but it's not, it is, no, not in, not in the state of Georgia.
Okay, so that's something that we, I think, do we require that today?
You guys require a background check, so the servers have to go through and they have to have a server permit. But the server permit...
The server permit, how do they get that?
They go to the police department.
They prove they're 18 years or older, or 21 or older?
Yeah, and that is another question.
And they, do they get, is that when they get their...
And, and one of the things I don't recommend is that the city get involved in providing the training, because then you open yourself up to, they have a violation, and then they say, oh, well, we got our training from you. And, but that is, it's, it's handled a different, there are plenty of jurisdictions that handle it the way that you do, and they don't have a specific requirement, and then it really runs the gamut with respect to who's required to be trained. There's different research out there that I can share with you, if that's something that you have an interest in.
I think maybe we, maybe look at, but what I want to be careful is that we don't get into too much regulation from our side, and then in turn, you know, maybe miss something that then put us at risk and whatnot. So we probably should look at that, but, you know, the council will decide later, is there are different options on that.
Okay. One other, I guess, big thing that I wanted to mention, and then I'll let you guys dictate, because I know we're running short on time, is with respect to the happy hour regulations, and there are, there are a number of regulations that are similar to a lot of other jurisdictions. It appears that the desire is to have something that's not a happy hour, that's where you don't encourage a happy hour-type scenario. But then there was one provision that caught my eye, where you can only do certain drink specials between, I think it's 4:30 and 7:30, which is exactly what a happy hour is. And so I didn't know whether that was an intentional deviation from that, or whether, there's just two places that seem confusing.
To me, I'd almost see happy hours as a marketing thing for establishment, but I hate for the city to get into promoting or not promoting something like that.
People can't have drink specials?
That's a business decision, and we shouldn't be getting involved in that. But today, are you saying that we have a law, it's in the law today?
I think, I think we should look at that.
Yes.
And I guess the question is, is that something just a holdover from Fulton County when we adopted all these ordinances?
Could have been, yeah.
Yeah, I think there's, just from looking at it, it appears that there are, you know, very well-intentioned, taking, not reinventing wheels, putting them in, because there's several, several sections that are very reminiscent of other jurisdictions. But then, there's, you know, an occasional situation like that, and I just wanted to get a understanding. So what I'll do is, I'll take a look at happy hour restrictions that are very, that give the business a lot of discretion, but then also, to the extent that there are some provisions that really do help to protect the citizens, maybe give you those options and where there are best practices that are involved. The other, one other big kind of overriding question is, with respect to the percentage food to alcohol ratios. State law currently is that, in order to be an eating establishment, which means in order to sell alcohol on Sundays, 50% of your revenue has to come from food. You can't have more than 50% of your revenue come from alcohol. And currently, Milton has kind of a similar, it's not really tied to Sunday sales, but it's more tied to being a restaurant. In some of my recent discussions with the Department of Revenue, they are looking at changing that and tweaking it, because we're starting to see, and particularly with the kind of culture that Milton has, I can see this being an issue that comes up with you guys, we're starting to see these businesses that are really amazing businesses, but my $16 glass of wine exceeds my $12 salad or my $12 cheese plate. And the intent, as we've discussed at the state level, is it's not to have 50/50, because under that same rule, I could give... under that same rule, I could give dollar pitchers of beer and $5 tacos, and I meet the 50/50 requirement. You've got people going and getting five pitchers of beer and two tacos, but then the guy down the street can't offer a $50 shot of some premium whiskey with your steak, because they can't meet the 50/50.
I, I would totally agree with, with that, because, you know, for the reasons you said. And also, I think it's probably more, I think the intent is to make sure if you're selling alcohol, you're also selling food. But it really shouldn't be a dollar, because like you say, you might get a $5 burger and a $10, $12 drink. It almost, I would be willing to look at that, and if you update us on what everybody else is doing, so that, you know, we could, because, so that they won't play games with, you know, given the cheap drinks.
Well, you guys would be an innovator in that area, because everybody else is kind of just sitting on it.
Waiting.
And just not enforcing it, is kind of what they're doing, is they're sitting and the state hasn't, it's something that I brought up with the state in one of my recent discussions with them. And they hadn't really thought much about it, but as we talked about it, they said, you know, this is something we probably need to look at changing, where certainly the food to beverage revenue can be an indicator, but it, that alone is not going to deprive you of your ability to be considered an eating establishment.
You know, again, I, number one, I would want to, you know, anything that can, we have such a small commercial area, percentage-wise in Milton, I'd want to promote, you know, up-and-coming businesses. So I'd be certainly willing to look at it, at least be looking at it, and I'd, we've been innovative on a whole lot of other things in the city of Milton, good, good things, so...
It doesn't really make sense. The goal of, the idea behind those laws is to encourage consumption of something other than alcohol. And so if the establishment decides, I'm going to give away free food, let's pretend this is Spain and tapas is the rule, how do I even account for that revenue? I don't. Yet, they're getting food, every single drink they order. So it doesn't really make any sense. It was a good idea that just was poorly executed.
I think the intent was just to make sure they're getting food, but, again, the, the numbers are, are kind of skewing now, because some alcohols are so expensive and food is not.
And did that differentiate, so you could designate what's a bar or what's a restaurant?
Right, so it's, it's two different types of things. At the local jurisdiction, it typically kind of differentiates the bar versus the restaurant. At the state level, it also impacts whether or not you can sell on Sundays. So you would be able to, while an establishment could still be distinguished as a restaurant for Milton's purposes, even if they had 70% of their revenue from alcohol, for example, you build in criteria that would also make sure, you know, we're not just going to look at percentage food sales.
Is that, is that a state law today, or is that a local jurisdiction?
That is a local, that would be a local jurisdiction decision. And then, you'd still be in compliance with the state from the standpoint that they couldn't sell on Sundays, unless they met the 50/50. But as I indicated, that may be changing soon, too.
All right. A lot of good things to think about. Any suggestion or anything you want to add, Sarah, or council?
We just have the follow-up meetings with the public on October 1st, one at 8:30 and the other one at 4:30 over in Community Place, so we encourage business owners and residents to come and give their feedback.
Will we be serving alcohol?
No.
Other, one more question, can we allow alcohol for our audience in city council meetings?
That might be a bad thing.
Thank you.
More people will come. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Stacy, if you'll call next on them?
On the agenda is discussion of golf cart use on City of Milton streets, and we do have a public comment on that.
We do? Okay, if we can have our public comment?
Sure. Gary Jablonsky.
What was your public comment?
Right in front of the microphone, if you don't mind.
Grab the microphone right there, Gary.
Thank you. I love this building. It's a great refuge when it's 95 degrees outside. Question to the mayor or the parliamentarian, I want to know why the Pledge of Allegiance was admitted from the session. And for me, I'm speaking about the use of golf carts. I'm here to listen, to see what you have to say, but before you start the discussion, consider a consolidated policy for non-licensed motorized vehicles. Golf carts you mentioned, what about ATVs? Oh, yeah, what about e-scooters? You might have heard that from me before. So I don't really have an opinion one way or the other, but if you're going to have a policy, have a policy that is for non-licensed motorized vehicles, to include those other things and not just golf carts. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So this is just a general discussion regarding, to try to gauge council's feeling on whether or not you would like to see golf cart ordinances instituted anywhere within the city. We've all received some, some inquiries, whether they're from, from some of our constituents. I've discussed it, I think, with all of you at this point. I think it's, I think it's time to get that discussion on the table here, and see whether or not it's something we would like to see. You know, as we've discussed, there's, there's benefits, there's economic development benefits, there's community building benefits of allowing that where it's safe, but there's drawbacks, and it's, there's, they're mostly safety-related. I'm going to ask the chief and our director of public works, Robert Drury, to come on up and engage in the conversation as well. I don't know if LT, if you're here as well for this, so we can engage in a little bit of a discussion here. From a, from a, I know, chief, you've done some work from a, from a public safety perspective. Could you just discuss that briefly with the council, and what you've seen, and some of your recommendations?
I'm sure, believe it or not. Test one?
You're on.
Yes, certainly, we've researched ordinances from, from other local jurisdictions. They're pretty, pretty common sense ordinances that require safety components of golf carts, such as lights, horns, things of that nature. They're restrictive of use. According to the state law, what we found is the state law is a bit convoluted at best on regulating these, so it's really been left up to the local municipalities to regulate golf carts. So that's certainly part of what has prompted this, this conversation. Some of the questions that have, that have come up is, what about our gated communities? Are we able to utilize any tools, any ordinances for gated communities? And the easy answer to that is no. Ken and I did some work on that a few months ago, and so that, that is, is one area that has been of interest. Another area of interest is perhaps making some areas through the city to make it easier to traverse on golf carts. One of the things that we found out, one of the obstacles is that, is we can't cross any state roads. So that is certainly limits our ability to enact an ordinance that, that may be what some citizens envision for the future of Milton, just because of, especially the corridor around here, the 372 corridor, 9 and 140. So that's a brief flyover of what we found. There are some, some ways around that, speaking of the state roads, that the DOT could allow us to put a golf cart crossing, which may link some of these, but I foresee that, based on my research, to be a very difficult, if not impossible, process.
Generally, what you, and I'll just jump in, generally what we're seeing from some of the other municipalities, and GMA has a model ordinance on this, what you're generally seeing is, is when it's being allowed, it's being allowed on roads with under a 35 mile an hour speed limit. Roswell, looks like they dropped that down 10 more to 25 miles an hour, allowing you to perpendicularly cross roads of a higher speed, as long as you do, you have safety mechanisms, mechanisms in place to get those, those vehicles across. But as the chief said, we do have some issues, especially where, where we would see probably the most success in Crab Apple, Deerfield, and Birmingham Crossroads with, with traversing state routes. So just something for us to consider. Robert, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I was going to make the speed limit.
I, I apologize.
Yeah, and along with those ordinances, that is a state law restriction on, on the speed. Of course, we could lower that, but as the other municipality did, but that is state law for 35 miles per hour.
I would, you know, I would be generally in favor of, of looking into this. I think in the right place, you know, a lot of benefits, parking, community building, quality of life. You'd see a lot of functions here, you know, right here in Crab Apple, where you already see some folks using their golf carts, but some of the neighborhoods, you know, first blush, I'm thinking, you know, you do the 35 mile an hour roads, like the state will allow, that could get a little, you know, that, that's a lot of roads. Maybe we look at the 25 miles an hour, that would limit to most neighborhoods only, and, you know, say your, your little urban areas like this. But anyways, my point is, I would certainly be interested in looking into it, an ordinance. Joe?
So in order to operate a vehicle on a state or county road, doesn't the vehicle have to have a license associated with it?
Uh, yes.
Not just like agriculture.
Something we came across, I said the, the laws are a bit convoluted on that. The golf cart itself would not have to be registered with a tag. A city can require golf cart registration.
Really?
Yes.
Many low, many low-speed motor vehicles, which is what these fall under, mopeds that are under 50 cc's, things along those lines, they don't require registration in the state of Georgia. So whether or not you end up in a situation where you can operate those on a state route, I can't, I can't answer that question.
Been a while since I've looked at the statute, but I seem to recall the state statute prohibits us from placing a registration requirement on those vehicles.
But Peachtree City does. They, they put them on the golf carts.
And I just read that very recently, and it was talking about going through the state to require a registration, a true tag, as you would any other type of motor vehicle. But a city can charge up to $15 to allow, or to enable their citizens to be able to register the golf carts, and that can be a requirement enacted in ordinance.
Laura?
So are we talking about just golf carts, or are we talking about ATVs, other motorized vehicles?
ATVs, according to state law, will be off the table to be utilized on public streets or highways.
But there are other vehicles, and that would be up to council of, as to whether or not you'd want to see those included. We, we use golf carts kind of generically, and that's all that we've really been approached with, but you have some other vehicles. Yeah, I mean, we, we just discussed scooters a couple of weeks ago, the electric scooters, but you also have bicycles that are electric now, that are low-speed motor vehicles, that that could also be considered, whether or not you'd want to include those. Segways are another low-speed motor vehicle. So just, just some things that, that if you wanted to consider those as part of an ordinance, there, there are other options. I, I don't, I'm not, I don't think that's all inclusive, I'm sure there's other low-speed motor vehicle that I'm not capturing, but, but that's what we're looking at.
All right.
And I, my final comment would be, yes, I'm interested, especially in the Crab Apple area, to, you know, alleviate some of the traffic that we're going to see. I would just suggest that we do this on a trial basis, and, you know, not widespread, to see how it's used, if we were to get that far.
What are the operator restrictions? Because all of a sudden, you got teenagers who don't have a driver's license operating golf carts.
We have seen some case law that would indicate that it would require a driver's license, and we've seen other city ordinances that lower that restriction to a learner's permit, or between 12 and 15 years of age with an adult in the front seat.
So, but for the things that have snuck in, like the, the motorized bicycles, which you don't have to have a, there's not an age restriction on operating a bicycle, or a, I don't think there's one for a Segway, or some of these other options, all of a sudden, it gets very convoluted.
It does, it does.
Well, would it be, maybe the first step is, and appreciate all the discussion on the different vehicles and, and public comment, but maybe the first step, we're kind of talking about golf cart, golf cart-type vehicles, but also give us the list of the other things that could be included, and we may pare those down, or may include those. Does that make sense? But the, the intent right now is really talking about a golf cart, but we need to discuss the other, the other vehicles that we may or may not want to, you know, allow.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of that, too. While we're doing it, let's just take an intelligent approach to look at what might be out there. New thing, new forms of transportation may be created as we go forward, hover, hoverboards and different things, but I'd be interested in seeing kind of what you, if staff brings forward really what's out there, what are the people doing, what do you think would work within Milton? But I'm in favor of looking at, looking at this, just look at it intelligently, and staff give, bring that back to council.
So whenever we talk about this, everybody references Peachtree City, right? And so obviously, they've had a history of getting to where they are today to make it work, a lot of fits and starts, and this didn't work, but that worked, and that's what they made. Obviously, you know, if we're talking about, I agree with what council member Bentley said, you know, Crab Apple is where we ought to look at it, or the commercial areas. Forty-two square miles of our city, so much of that is not going to be used, but yet we have people in my own subdivision that drive around in golf carts with, you know, or ATVs or, or small motorcycles or whatever. So we, we need to think about that as a separate zone. But I'm curious to know if we were, if we were to look at Peachtree City as the model, and everybody references, you know, is that a path that we should think about looking at going, as far as how they've done, just to, or are they wrong in what they're doing? They're obviously doing something right, because everybody references them. So how do we think about them and incorporating some of what they've done, and see if it works in Milton? That's just my question.
I think in a lot of ways, they're on the right path, speaking strictly from public safety. Infrastructure may be something different to look at. As you said, they've had a history, they've kind of planned this out, and we have to look at multi-use paths, and a lot of that outside of the purview of public safety.
So would our trail plan have something to do with this as well?
Well, I was going to say, it may tie in, be careful.
I think from a planning perspective, in a lot of areas, we'd be very much constrained in you to only be able to rely on shared, shared access. But in other areas that aren't built out as much, you may still be able to, to create that, that shared trail, that infrastructure. And I think, I think we could achieve both. We would just have to be, as we, as we move forward, we have to incorporate those into future plans. We have not been planning for those kinds of, that kind of shared access. I don't know, I wish we still had our, our trail people here. They're, at a certain width, you can all this, you can now introduce both, I want 10 feet?
12 feet.
12 feet?
12 feet.
So at 12 feet, you could now, we have an extra chair, come on up, Michelle. The, you, you can introduce that use, you know, I think, is Cogburn currently 12-foot, if you go down along, as you're going, the, where we just introduced in the last five years or so?
I know on that, and 12 feet, so it's the same width, it's just about 12 feet.
So there are some areas where we're ready to go. It would be whether or not you could create that, that, that network.
So as we look at the maps on the trail plan, then we should probably distinguish those specific trails that are 12 feet?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So we can do that, and as a possibility. And then from us, the gauge is, okay, if we are to do this, where do we begin that connectivity via golf cart pass, so that we know how much of the population it would affect?
Yeah, and, and just to mention, you know, in our 2012 LCI for Crab Apple, as well as the form-based codes, it does mention planning for trails and using things like golf carts and other types of material, vehicles. We're calling it the short distance transportation mobility, this is what we are talking about, and that will definitely help with the Crab Apple area, and also Deerfield areas, to get people to do these short distances without having to jump in their minivans or their SUVs, just to get for one mile and go back home, yeah.
Really quick, I'm okay with it being citywide, as long as it's 25 or under, because I don't want to restrict somebody's use if they want to just ride in their neighborhood or anything. Because I think I, that's why if we get the speed limit right, I think it'll encompass all of it.
I think that's the default with the lower speed limit, it will keep it in a residential or slow area, not a, you know, Freemanville Road kind of deal.
The speed limit on the vehicle is also a big consideration. Right, the, Lieutenant Ward and I, we're talking about this earlier, the, at 20, greater than 25 miles per hour for the vehicle would put it into a different class, so it would be out of that golf cart and low-speed motor vehicle classification. So then, certain other laws would, would come into play.
Well, maybe, you know, at least for now, give us the different options, but we can look at the 25 and use that as, as a bar, and then, you know, see which direction we want to go.
But just one clarification, state law, though, does prohibit crossing of the state highway. That state law, so...
Without the, they can get approval.
Correct, so for example, the reason we talked about this, is Crab Apple, is recently being a priority.
Right.
But you wanted to have, you wanted to have a cross.
So you can regularly cross any municipal road? State has to cause a cross.
It's not out of, Ken and I are reviewing something while we're talking. It's not, it's not that it can't be done. We will have to make designated crossings at those, where, where we cross over a state route, and we'd have to get, from what I understand, DOT's blessing.
If we're building on a state route, we're going to have to get DOT's permission to do that.
And we're still trying to work to get the crosswalk just for pedestrians to go across Crab Apple, so.
All right, anything else?
One last question on age. So can we have an age requirement, that it be 16?
Can I try that one real, real quick? Because the statutes, curious, isn't quite capture it. But I, but I will say this. I, I remember when this was adopted in 2012. I had forgotten it and actually had tried to forget it, but I'm reminded now when this, this, this statute allows you to opt in if you were a jurisdiction that had opted in prior to 2012 when it, when it became effective. And I think this was made for the Peachtree Cities, et cetera. But if you didn't, which almost no jurisdiction did, all operators of these vehicles are required to possess a valid driver's license, except when operating a PTB within a locality that had adopted one of these ordinances back prior to 2012. So the bottom line is, I think the cleaner way to answer your question is, if we do this now and adopt one of these ordinances now, it's going to take a driver with a driver's license to operate one. I think that's a, that's a reasonable position to take.
I would support that only.
And again, that can all be in the discussion, you know, what you bring forward to us. We can all discuss that. Okay, let's give us the options. Anything else? All right, we'll let you earn. Thank you.
Thank you.
At the 30th, Jeff.
Sarah, I'm sorry. I should have called you-